Taxes are.
There's one vote.
Twenty point four.
That's good.
No, oh, yeah, yeah. No. No, I mean, you'll. You gotta.
But we had a win on Saturday.
You gotta make a decent amount to.
There's no trouble.
You have to wait a couple of seconds.
At the time of check.
Yeah, the old, this is the old plan.
But it's in Japanese, right now.
Like what, where you were trading order versus twelve of shrubs?
So it's a giant.
Then you bought the other house in Plymouth Township, the one. Or are you still in the city?
No.
You moved to the, that older house, uh?
Yeah, that's.
It doesn't exist anymore. There's no plant to be done anymore.
Yeah, I didn't realize there's so many unique homes in that area.
And really the rest.
They're just pretty cool, yeah, yeah.
This is the second.
And they just opened up a new bar.
The first one was a trigger rider.
Yep.
Other than.
Yeah.
Uh, one is seven and one is five.
Old name, which was.
Or Will's.
Some song.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
I think.
Yeah.
Starkweather, one of those. Red Ryder, yeah.
Yeah, pretty much.
I got a Facebook.
This is wacked. This is wacked. This is wacked. This is wacked.
No, that's a great name.
So they're, uh, the owners of that, well, are one of the sisters that has home boxs.
Ah.
It's their son that's in there.
I see.
And all they're doing is kind of play, uh, LP. No, no, so music. Vote ties, no. Pride, he owns fourteen thousand albums.
Oh, nice. Well, that's kind of fun.
And if they did, I got. Yeah, you could see that.
Wow.
Yeah. And then they have this flower girl, to the flower girl with her petals, that's her dad. For the dad, that's, and he was doing that, you know, real farm.
Did they use paneling?
All right.
Stupid seventies paneling.
I could save him some money. I could spend several year out.
Hi, Tim.
Do they still make that paneling?
Yeah.
They, they do.
The Plymouth Township Planning Commission meeting will come to order at seven oh two. Secretary, please call, roll.
Dennis Sabolski.
Here.
Tim Boyd.
Here.
Kendra Barberina is here.
Bob Dorshavitz.
Here.
James Berry is excused. Uh, Stuart Pop.
Here.
Dave Ladewig.
Here.
And is there a motion to approve the agenda, uh, tonight's agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. Okay. Uh, move by Commissioner Barberina, supported by Commissioner, uh, Pop, to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And is there a motion to approve the August twenty first meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, um, approve the minutes of the August twenty first, twenty twenty four meeting as submitted.
There's support?
Support.
Move by Commissioner Barberina, supported by Commissioner Boyd, to approve the August twenty first minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of September fourth study session?
I move we, um, approve the minutes of September fourth.
Okay. Is there support?
Support.
Move by Commissioner Pop and supported by Commissioner Dorshavitz to approve the September fourth meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Um, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find my notes here. On the, uh, September fourth, on page two, um, item number, Roman numeral nine. It says Commissioner Barberina would prefer that Sheldon Road be primarily industrial. Um, Kendra, I don't, did you mean a specific part of Sheldon Road or?
Um, yeah, I saw that too. I think industri- and Sheldon and Five Mile.
Sheldon and Five Mile.
West of Sheldon is.
Oh, okay.
What it should be, actually.
Sorry, yeah.
Okay, now I propose we make that change then.
Let's, so the, yeah, I'll be specific about that section.
So is there any objection from the com- uh, the commission on, on, uh, that motion to just change it to modi- uh, to, uh, modify the minutes? Or do I have to, do we want to take another motion?
Okay, I, I make a motion we approve with the, uh, correction.
Okay. And support?
Support.
Okay. Move by Commissioner, um, Commissioner Pop and supported by Commissioner Boyd to approve the, um, September fourth minutes, uh, as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, this is public comments. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to any non-agenda item? Okay, there are none. We'll move on. First item is application twenty five thirty two, Big B Coffee Site Plan Amendment. And it's a planner to, want to walk us through that?
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, I will go over the, uh, site plan amendment with you here. It is for R and B Coffee House of Plymouth or Big B Coffee at thirteen oh seven Ann Arbor Road. Just as a quick refresher, final site plan was approved on April nineteenth, twenty twenty three. This is a drive-through Big B Coffee restaurant. The total site is point four five acres and it is zoned ARC in the Ann Arbor Road corridor district. Yes, this was also a, a special land use. Um, and that was also approved previously. Uh, the summary of the proposed modifications that are in tonight's application, uh, summarized are a reduction in the landscaping plan by approximately seventy one percent of the total plantings that were originally proposed. The addition of eleven ballards for each parking space, the addition of two exterior lights, and, um, some dumpster enclosure building materials. The, you know, largest, uh, change that's being proposed ties in both to the vehicular access and circulation as well as the landscaping sections of the review. Uh, in general, there is, uh, an overall loss of plantings throughout the site.
And what?
And then while she's going over the landscaping. Sorry.
I didn't, uh, catch your name.
Sorry, my name's Ashley.
Ashley?
Yes.
She wrote the report that we're reading.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I saw your name on it.
That one's for the, the Ballard plan, I believe.
This is the original, right?
Well, this is.
This has the separation.
Yes, so this has the, the Ballard plant.
Yeah, the.
And so the next page, I believe, has the. But that's the photometric plan, yeah.
Landscaping.
All the way.
It's all the way at the end of the, no, yeah, keep going.
Keep going down.
There we, there we go. That's the new proposed landscaping plan. Uh, so there is sort of an overall loss in quantity of plantings as well as variety of plantings. The most significant losses were are the building itself. There was planting both on the west and south side of the actual building as well as two parking lot islands to help delineate where the drive-through traffic is. The one on the new plan there, you can see to the west, is still left there, but it's now proposed as just grass. Uh, whereas before there was a number of plantings. And the one to the south there is proposed to be completely removed. Um, and in its place, just safety, yellow striping, um, on the parking lot surface. There are also, I would say, in the, the other significant loss of landscaping, it's mostly to the east, along the eastern site, or the eastern line of the site there. Um, we've lost it in the middle, um, directly separating the DTE substation and then to the north side of the eastern line and the south side of the eastern line. There is still landscaping present, but it's just less. Um, largely the landscaping directly buffering Barlow Ave and Ann Arbor Road. Um, there's, there's still landscaping there. It's just slightly less with less variety. But the most significant landscaping loss is going to be around the building right now. There's none proposed. There's just grass strips. And then that southern parking, uh, lot island, you know, being completely removed. So we, um, like I, I mentioned, in general, there's about a seventy one, you know, approximately seventy, seventy one percent loss of overall landscaping. Um, the bulk of that does come, the highest loss is in grasses and flowers. Um, the next highest being shrubs and bushes. The trees are, are largely the same. Um, there was one tree removed off this plan all the way on the south side of, uh, the property. But I actually believe that tree was technically on the property of the residence to the south. It was something that was being negotiated with the homeowner and I think they indicated they don't want the tree planted. So, um, that is the loss of the tree. But most of the landscaping loss is in the form of shrubs, bushes, grasses, and flowers. Um, the other things that were included in this review regarding exterior lighting, they did add to the, the original final site plan, um, had a total of eight exterior lights. This now has ten. They're proposing ten. Um, everything is still in compliance. There's no issue. The photometric plan looks good. Uh, so we don't see an issue with the increase in the exterior lighting. And the, the ballards that were proposed are, there's one basically for each parking space. The homeowner, again, to the south, requested just an extra measure of safety and, and buffering. So those are the significant changes in the site plan amendment for you to consider. Yep, and then we are recommending, um, we see no issue with the ballards, the exterior lighting, um, and the gate for the dumpster enclosure for those materials. Um, and we recommend approval for those items and it is recommended, uh, to deny the, uh, proposed landscaping.
I, I didn't catch it. I was reading something.
Oh, no, that's okay. Um, we are recommending approval for the Ballard's exterior lighting, um, and the dumpster gate material. And we are recommending denial for the proposed landscaping changes.
And we have an email here, uh, from the, um, the, the engineer. And she's questioning, does the fire department need to review? So have they reviewed this change or did they need to review this change?
I don't, uh, I think, I don't believe there was anything that needed to be checked by the fire department to do this one.
It doesn't seem like they changed.
It wouldn't affect.
Right. Yeah, the landscaping wouldn't affect their ability to access anything. Okay. And the applicant is here. So can you step up? Thank you. Oh, over here.
Oh, there we go.
It moved it back again. Can I ask a neophyte question?
Sure.
What's a Ballard?
It's a post, like a cement post.
The cement posts with the yellow thing on it? Yeah, okay. Yep.
So why are you, uh, why are these changes necessary?
All right, my name is Mike Houstey. I'm, uh, the construction manager and development consultant. And Rhonda Perry.
Rhonda Perry, um, I have fun. Bob and I are the owners of the property.
Right, so, uh, as we started construction, I was able to meet Julie, our neighbor, uh, to the south. And, uh, so we have a shared property line and we installed a Buff Tech wall, a privacy wall, on that shared, uh, pri- on that shared property line. And she brought up a very good point. Uh, can a car drive through either a masonry wall or a Buff Tech wall? Because her bedroom is just a few feet from our shared property line. And it turns out, after a little bit of research, yeah, car can smash through a masonry wall, no problem. And same thing with this Buff Tech wall. So it makes sense from a safety standpoint to put ballards, uh, along all of the parking spaces that border, uh, Julie's property. They're not cheap, but they're needed for safety. So this was not caught during our first round of site plan approval, uh, our, our original, uh, round of site plan approval. Then, so I actually wanted to meet Julie during our site planning process, but, uh, uh, the, the, the township planner at the time handled all that communication. So the first opportunity we had to meet Julie was after construction started.
Is that her house?
Yes, it is. Yep. Exactly, and so, and her bedroom is, uh, right at the end that is closest to, to us. Um, and so then I looked at the photometric plan, the, the, the formally approved photometric plan. And what do you know? There's a bunch of lights spilling right into her bedroom. That's not good. You know, we, we don't want to be that kind of a neighbor. So we took a look at revising the photometric plan and if you could please flip to the photometric plan.
Yeah, it'll be.
The revised one.
Dennis, he's, he's.
He's controlling it, sorry.
You got it? Oh, okay, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Well, I can just explain. The new photometric plan has zero light shining into her bedroom. Lot better than, I think, zero point four foot candles that was originally approved. So we were able to achieve that by moving the light pole from that southern drive-through island, the one that we eliminated, not for landscaping purposes, that, that's, we'll save that reason for later. But we moved that light pole to our southern property line with a light shield and were able to beam the light into the parking lot and away from her. So she was happy with all of this and that makes us happy and we want to be a good neighbor. Uh, why are we removing, why are we proposing to remove the southern drive-through island? Well, to be honest, I was in the middle of site planning a different project and we found out that, uh, a pickup truck, a large pickup truck, does not have the adequate turning radius to make that turn. It would smack into that island. And we do have a photo, we do have a, uh, vehicle tracking analysis in the package that clearly shows the truck smacking into that island and also hitting the light pole that was in that island. So why is that island there? Yes, it looks nice and if we have room for the truck to get around, we would leave it, but we don't. It's a tight site and we don't want vehicles getting stuck or smacking anything. Um, so this is a lesson that we learned, uh, and I would much rather make that change now than worry about it after it's built. So as far as the landscaping goes, our understanding is that the revised landscape plan meets the ordinance, meets the ARC ordinance. And the previous plan, we thought met the ordinance, well, it turns out it wildly exceeded the ordinance. And when we got a quote, uh, for, for the landscaping, we had sticker shock. And, you know, it's interesting, while this project was being, uh, approved, it took about a year, year and a half to get approved. This is, the whole thing started right during the middle of COVID. And construction prices, inflation, has just been crazy, like thirty, thirty-five percent increases in construction prices. So the project is over budget because of that. And then we had a sticker shock with this landscape plan that wildly exceeded the ordinance. And my fault for not catching this at the beginning. Uh, lesson learned. I will next time. Uh, so the revised landscape plan meets the ordinance and I'm puzzled why it's not recommended if it meets the ordinance. So that's, uh, those are my questions, uh, by comment. Rhonda, do you have a?
No.
Word? Okay. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can you respond to that?
Sure, um, so we, we did talk about that as a team. Um, and it, it is our opinion that the propos- original proposed landscaping is more in line with other projects that have been, um, completed. I listed Dunkin' Donuts, Chipotle, First Merchants, First Merchants Bank, et cetera. Um, so the original proposed landscaping is, is more in line with those types of projects as well as, um, just while the original proposed landscaping might be above what is required in the ordinance, that is what was, you know, proposed in the tentative plan as well as the final site plan. Um, and, and, you know, what had been proposed, what we'd hold, held public hearings on and what had gone through multiple reviews. So, uh, that is, that is why we are recommending that it be denied.
So on this turning radius for large pickup trucks, uh, did this, this entire island have to be cut out of the project? Or can it be narrowed in some way or reduced in size?
We looked at those alternatives and we came to the conclusion it's, we either have it or we don't. I mean, if it gets too skinny, uh, we still have the issue of that truck hitting it. And if we can pull up the vehicle tracking, uh, analysis, we can, we can see that.
Okay, I'll, I'll respond to do that.
I'm not sure where that's at.
It's, I need to make sure I know what page it is. It's, is it?
It is, yeah.
Pink and green?
It's twenty four of the PDF.
Uh, this is the, this is the relevant sheet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's right after the photometric plan.
Yeah, I think it's.
This one?
That's it.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Green line is the outer tire. I actually got in, I actually borrowed a few friend's trucks and did, did some test drives and it was shocking with the bad turning radius these things have, and they have to be accommodated.
Is this a standard size pickup or like an extended cab?
Three fifty, which act- which actually has a little bit better turning radius than a Silverado.
And is, so what is the, the conflict with moving it sa- like the island south?
But then we have parking spaces and we have an aisle.
Okay.
So it would impact that. The, the parking, those southern parking spaces aren't labeled on this plan.
I just wanted to, yeah.
The, um, the one here I'm looking at, looks to me like the outer edge of the tires goes right through the middle of the, uh, traffic island. So if you reduce the width by fifty percent, it might just scrape by. Probably wouldn't allow you to landscape the island, but.
Exactly. There's not enough space left for landscaping there. And should we really make these trucks thread the needle? I mean, not everyone's a perfect driver all the time. So even though thi- this is showing the ideal driver driving it perfectly. Uh, there's a lot of bad drivers who will not follow this path.
Uh, from the planning perspective, is the issue just that they're getting rid of the islands? Or is it more driven by the lack of landscaping on the islands?
Uh, I would say that it's, it's more driven by the lack of landscaping and the fact that the, you know, the reduction in plantings just in that island alone, you know, could have been put elsewhere to keep the amount of landscaping the same. Also, um, you know, again, referencing other projects approved in that corridor, um, having these, you know, nice delineated landscaped islands as part of the drive-through is what is common. Uh, so in terms of, you know, what an alternative may be, um, you know, we haven't seen, we're not aware of if there is a proposed alternative that could be adequate to still serve, uh, service the, the trucks and the turning radius there. Um, you know, we're, we're, that would have to be something that would have to be designed by somebody else and proposed to us.
It is a small site.
Yeah, that's, I think it's a good.
It's just flat out, it's not enough room to do that.
Yeah, I think it's a good point.
It's a pretty narrow space.
I mean, I hate those tight spaces. I drive over the curve all the time. I just admitted that, too. Um, but I, I, I agree, that's tight.
Is there any place else on that site that you could put some, is, uh, any additional landscaping? I mean, seventy one percent is quite a reduction, especially at this stage of development.
One potential thought is that the bank of Ann Arbor across the street, uh, it has, um, uh, nice yellow lilies, uh, and I think they're beautiful.
Daylilies? Daylilies?
Daylilies, yes. Uh, perhaps we could do some of those in the, in the menu board island, which is the north-south island, just to the west of the building. Uh, and the ARC ordinance talks about being cohesive. Uh, I think that would be cohesive with our neighborhood.
What about on the, uh, near the, uh, the frontage of the property? Anything that you can squeeze in?
Well, so this is not the landscape plan. Could we go back to that one?
It's on thirty. So. It's a case of the cost over squeezing it in. There's room for it.
You know, I think the, the frontage on Ann Arbor Road is pretty loaded up with landscaping. Um, the, the, that island, that north-south island to the west of the building is currently proposed as grass. So that would be, I think, a logical place to, to put the vertical.
If we were going to comment on, um, you know, places where we would like to see landscaping added back in, um, as the applicant mentioned, the other landscaping island and that, um, just to the west where the, I believe, do you call it a menu?
Menu board island.
The menu board island. Um, both of those are currently listed as just grass at the moment, um, rather than having plantings. And then, as I mentioned originally, um, really the, the bulk of the other landscaping loss is along that eastern border, uh, buffering the substation. So those would be the areas that we would recommend.
But we physically have no room there.
So are there two lanes that you can drive up to in order?
Yes. Right, right. On that eastern, um, boundary with the DTE substation, uh, we have a, a grade change of about a foot, foot and a half, and we're gonna have to do a little boulder retaining wall there. So there's really zero physical space for any landscaping.
It, but, but the existing landscaping, the areas that you are proposing to have landscaping that were originally proposed to have much more landscaping as well. So that, there is like, there is simply a reduction in the amount of landscaping that is providing screening where there, where there was. So there are still, I understand that along that edge.
This area is being removed completely and then the rest of these areas, it's just a reduction. There is still some landscaping.
That original landscape plan did not take the to- the topography into account and that was a mistake on the landscape plan. So that would have been impossible to plan anything there.
So again, our recommendation is really that the, the way that the ordinance is written on the determination on final site plan approval is that the, um, I have the quote, I actually have a quote here, so I'm gonna set it up. Um, the, uh, changes to the site plan that are. Sorry, I have, oops. Microphones. So, um, the planning commission isn't, the, the planning commission should grant amendments to site plan, to the final site plan when, um, it does not materially alter the originally approved site design. And what we're suggesting is that the originally approved site design incorporated a much larger amount of landscaping that has made this character of the site design significant. larger amount of landscaping that has made this character of the site design significantly different, um, from what it was when it was approved. Um, and so the approved site plan, um, we think it's important that when a site plan is submitted to the planning commission, that it is considered, like, the landscaping is taken into consideration, all aspects of the site are taken into consideration when the landscaping is proposed with the original site plan. And that when we're looking at the original site plan, or the official final site plan with the planning commission, that it is very close to what it will look like when it is built, with the intention, in the intention of the developer. And I think that, um, so I think it's just important that we, that, that, that this w- w- size of the change.
You're saying it's a material alteration of the, of the final approved site plan to reduce that landscaping by that amount?
By that amount, yes.
The other thing that crosses my mind at this point, you know, because I think of landscaping and, and pavement, uh, what's your plan for, uh, snow storage when it snows? Where are you gonna put all the snow, since it is a very tight site? Uh, and now we've got, you know, we're eliminating some islands and things like that, so where, where are you gonna put that snow?
That, that's a very good point. Um, I mean, we do have a small area at our southern property boundary, basically where the bollards are, where that snow could be stored, but it's tight. There's not a lot of room there, that's for sure. Um, and also, if I could add, the cost of those bollards, I mean, they're expensive. So, yeah, we could spend money on landscaping theoretically. I'd much rather spend it on safety and being a good neighbor. And I respectfully request that we all just follow the ordinance. I mean, I, I, the, the plan that was proposed, we thought, follow the ordinance, and we were wrong, incorrect, and we, we learned that after site plan approval occurred. So, we just request to follow the ordinance and not wildly exceed it.
Can I also make a comment? And I debated on whether to bring this up or not, but when we purchased the lots, uh, we knew there was a building there that burned down, and you thought we had a clear, um, lot there that it had been cleaned up. Well, upon, uh, starting our, uh, site plan, or our site excavation, there was a large amount of the foundation still in the lot that we had to dig out.
Right.
And we had to bring in dirt that cost us an extra $20,000. So that wasn't in the original plan either. We were told we had to clean site. So that has really been hampering the budget as well.
Yeah, and I, I'm sympathetic to that. I'm sympathetic to this extra clean up and, and, and I'm not sympathetic, but encouraged that you're trying to make safety, you know, a, a part of this design. Uh, but I'm not sympathetic when I keep hearing, well, we didn't think about that, or this was a mistake, and some, you know, there's gonna be mistakes, but, uh, 71% is a pretty big reduction, and something that we've seen all along and as we progress through this project. So I'm, I myself and welcome other commissioners to chime in as to what can be, uh, an appropriate solution that, uh, that we can come to to, to have that same look and feel that was originally showed to us through the whole process of this approval.
Do you have suggestions for some additional plantings?
Well, I asked you that question. I'm not gonna design it, you know? And I, I get the answer back, well, there's a foot, foot and a half grade, now you're gonna put the boulders in there, the landscape plan, and then take that into account. So I, I don't know. I mean, are there other, uh, things that were not thought of, uh, in the design, uh, stage of this? Because now we're here, the building is up. Uh, firstly, I'm looking forward to the building. I think it's, the building is very well designed, um, but, uh, we have to look at all aspects of the project.
I also have one other thing, is that, as a reminder, they did, there's, this has, this is special land use approval, so that affords the planning commission more, uh, discretion in how the site is presented in order to mitigate the effects of the d- drive-through, which is a special land use.
Yeah, I'm concerned there have been other projects that we've approved in the past where we thought, uh, the, uh, the traffic flow on the site, uh, was tight, and then when the project is completed, it is tight. And I've been on some of those sites, and, uh, I'm not too happy with it. And, uh, so I'm happy that you have looked at, you know, the, the flow of traffic on that site as people pick up their, uh, their, uh, orders. Do other commissioners have any thinking on this?
Well, I'm concerned that, as I was of setting a precedent of changing a site plan, like a landscape plan after we've already approved it, I could see every applicant coming back and saying, "Price has went up. Can we amend our landscape plan?" So I see an issue with that. Um, see, is the, but, for that landscape plan, um, does it meet the ordinance, the revised one? I heard it from the applicant, but from the planner, does the revised landscape plan meet the ordinance?
It, it does meet the minimum requirements.
It does meet the minimum, okay. And what were the places that you said again, that you used for comparables?
So if the biggest reduction would be, again, the, the...
Which, which comparison sites?
Yeah.
Like other, other...
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Chipotle, First Merchants Bank, and Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay. All right, Chipotle wasn't, they didn't come to us, that was...
At Henry Ford.
Mm-hmm. That wasn't us. Um, okay, First Merchants, and Dunkin' Donuts was us. Okay. Thank you.
There's another bank, or, oh wait, not First Merchants, that was.
So when you say reduce, are, um, you just would have nothing, or, or you'd have bark, or, or what, what is, what is reduce?
We're reducing it to meet the ordinance standard.
Right.
So what's, what's listed in the zoning ordinance, that's what we're meeting. Uh, the original plan wildly exceeded it.
Right, right.
Without our understanding that it was being wildly exceeded.
Right, right. So is there a way to have higher coverage, but reduce the cost? Because it seems like the main issue's costs, you know, money. So is, is there a way to... I mean, it's hard to go to, from 71 down to whatever. So, did you look at changing the plants or something to reduce the cost or anything? Did you look at any of that kind of stuff?
There, there was, I can speak to that also. There was a significant reduction in the variety of planting as well.
Right.
In, in all categories, so...
Okay.
Um, as well as the number. And again, the, the largest decrease is gonna be in the grasses and flowers, and then the second largest in shrubs and bushes, and trees remaining basically the same.
Just the number of individual plants, as well as the number of vari- the number of different plants that are used, has, has, is lower in the new plan.
Right. And again, we use the ordinance as our guide most time around.
Yeah, but that's minimal. Remember you said minimal? When I, people tell me that, other applicants say, "Well, we meet the minimal." That means, well, if I was a school teacher, I'd say, "Well, so that's a C. You get by." But we're not a C community. I like to think of us as more of a B or an A.
So, open to, uh, creative ideas for some additional plantings here. Uh, I am not a landscape architect. I'm an urban planner. Landscape architect was class many years ago, don't remember at all. So certainly open to ideas.
Well, have you, have you met with staff here about the landscaping?
I asked to months ago, and nobody would. So it's a little frustrating, because we're right in the middle of construction.
Right.
And everything, we just had to slam the brakes on, because we were not allowed to come to last month's meeting. Here we are this month. Uh, so it's been a difficult situation.
What do you mean, nobody would?
I asked to meet with Laura back in May to discuss exactly this.
And she said no?
It never happened. Here we are.
I don't want to speak to, uh...
Yeah, well...
I believe I have an email in here of...
Yeah.
In the back asking to meet to discuss.
That's another issue. We have to resolve what we, what we're facing today, and I don't think we can resolve it today, frankly. I mean, we can't just sit down and say, "Well, we'll put a rosebush here and a something else over there." Uh, I mean, we have to take a serious look at it. Um, perhaps what we should do is, uh, have the administrative review committee look at it, meet with, with you folks, Laura's staff here, and see what can be done about it.
Happy to have a meeting. Yes, I would just, uh, request that we do it soon, because we are...
Right.
Right in the middle of it.
Well, that's the only solution I can see, unless somebody has something else.
That's what I'd suggest, I mean...
I'm okay with that. I do have a question on the bollards, though. Have you, any other communities that, that accept that or require that? Like, when there's an interface between a drive-through, parking spaces, a wall, and then residential? Because I could see that all the way down Ann Arbor Road.
I, I definitely think that that is something that, that is something that other communities require when you're that close to a, to a residential use, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there enough, when you were talking about that, is there enough, uh, can I say, access to, to this lady's home that they could get up that much speed to, to go through?
I'm shocked at how bad some drivers are. Sudden acceleration once you're parked.
Yeah, I've seen pictures where there are rollovers in a, in a residential neighborhood, and I don't know how people, if they're following even 30 or 35 miles in a residential, which is 25, how they can flip a car over, but, uh, they find a way.
And there is one other item that I don't think made it into the package here. Um, so we did a Buff Tech wall, privacy wall, uh, on our shared property line with Julie, and, um, and we also have the masonry, uh, uh, columns, uh, in between the, the fencing. We would request to do the dumpster enclosure in the same material as that Buff Tech wall, so it's matches.
I do think that's in the package.
Oh, is that in the package?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted specifically to bring that up, so there's no confusion there.
No. I don't think there's an issue with that.
Now, in the package, we also have a dumpster gate.
Right.
That's proposed.
Yep, yep.
But in addition to that, we would also like to do that Buff Tech enclosure to match the wall.
I don't see an issue with that, unless someone else does. Okay, well, should we, um, well, should we have a, a motion to refer this to the administrative review commission? They have the final say on this, or how, how does the commission want to handle that?
We could approve, um, in the recommendation formation, we could approve all of the items except for the landscape plan and delegate that to the administrative review committee to resolve.
Okay.
That's good.
That sounds good.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion. So, Mr. Chairman, with respect to budget number 2532, we'd be copying, 1307 Ann Arbor Road. I propose, or I move that we, um, grant amended site plan approval for the following items: additional bollards for parking spaces, revised photometric plan, and dumpster screening gate. And that we refer the proposed landscaping plan to the administrative review committee to find a solution that, um, reflects the concerns of the applicant, but also, um, is responsive to the original site plan that we approved.
Okay.
Support?
Move by Commissioner Boyd and support by Commissioner Barberina to, um, approve with conditions, uh, application 2532. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, well, we'll, and you will communicate that to Laura to set up a meeting.
Sure.
Not you, no, I'm talking to our planner. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next is application 2536, the pilgrim walk signage.
Yeah, so I think that maybe it would be best to put the sign, uh, plans to, to take a look at. Um, uh, it shows, so you can see what they look like. I think it's easier. Um, the applicant, this is for the, um, monument signage at Plymouth Walks. Uh, they're proposing three, uh, new signs. This is a PUD, which is straddling two zoning districts. So just as a start, it's a little, um, it, the, ultimately, the standards on the, uh, for the signage for the planning and development are a little bit flexible, because it's a PUD, um, and we can take into consideration the requirements for the ARC district and for the industrial district, as well as for standards for signs in residential areas. So it's, that's just a preface for as we go into this review. Um, ultimately, um, we are considering three monument signs, um, or they are called monument signs, Monument A, B, and C. They are site, uh, Monument A and Monument B are both considered site entry features per the definition of the ordinance. Um, a site entry feature is a wall with a sign on it, um, whereas a monument sign is a sign on top of a base. So slight difference. Um, typically, in the ARC district, a monument sign would be required, but as it is a PUD, um, residential developments are specifically allowed to have, um, wall signs, um, so, or site, site entry features. Um, so it is a recommended determination of the planning commission that a site entry feature is permitted for use at these, for these two signs, because of where they're located, it makes sense for the proposed, um, for the planning and development. Um, the third sign being proposed, um, is on the next page, um, and that is Monument C. Uh, I'm sorry, one more page. Um, mm, nope. Yeah, there you go. Um, and this is a, this would be at the entrance to one of the phases of the site, um, that is, I believe this is the first se- phase of the site to be constructed. Um, this sign is, um, a unique type of sign that doesn't necessarily fit a definition of the ordinance. Um, it would technically be a ground sign. Um, officially, the ordinance doesn't really have a classification for this type of sign, um, but it's, um, we can go into that after we... Um, so those are the three types of signs that are being considered. Um, in our review, um, I will just mention the, um, additional, um, items for both of the proposed site entry features, Monument A and B. They're appropriately set back from the road. Um, the third sign, the ground sign, is located on a corner and is within a clear corner vision area. Um, and so it is not typically, uh, signs cannot be within 20 feet of that corner intersection of the curve. Um, so that sign will need to be relocated to...
So you're saying it would block people's view?
View, turning at that intersection. Um, so we recommend that sign is relocated. Um, it technically doesn't have an association with a specific property, um, so it would also need to be given special permission for a sign to be located in that, um, place, because it's not affiliated with a building, a specific building, more distant area of the, of the site.
Well, like, similar to a subdivision sign.
Right. So I, it, it's...
In the middle of the subdivision.
It makes sense in context. This is part of the approval, um, of what they need for the planning commission, because this is a special circumstance, um, site. Um, so we recommend approval of the location and the type of sign being used in all circumstances. Um, the, what we would like planning consider, planning commission to consider would be the design of the monument signs along Ann Arbor Road. Um, and then we would recommend that the remainder of the dimensional requirements are considered, um, by the admin review committee, um, for the minor issues like the size of the sign and determining a location for the, um, subdivision sign. Um, so the, uh, design of the monument signs, um, is for the one along Ann Arbor Road... is, uses a gray stone veneer. The planning commission, the zoning ordinance specifically states that Y and dot brick is to be used on signs and decorative features along Ann Arbor Road. The applicant has proposed and showed on plans that they will provide columns that are in the Y and dot brick, fencing with columns, similar to the ones along Ann Arbor Road nearby. That would also be an administrative review because this is a sign review. But they have proposed to integrate their design into Ann Arbor Road in that way. However, they are requesting to have the, the signage, the site entry features with the gray stone veneer, which would require approval from the planning commission as it does not match the ARC district standards. So that's really the question, is that design of that monument sign on Ann Arbor Road? If there are any other consigns with the other, concerns with the other signs?
The applicant is here.
My planner that works for Toll Brothers. What staff had just said is true. There were three signs that are being proposed as sort of this community sign package for Plymouth Walk. The first one is sort of the larger sign that has, carries sort of the fence style that you see along the corridor. The original submittal that Toll Brothers had submitted had those columns being stone, matching the stone sign for Plymouth Walk. And after meeting with staff, decided that we would go with the Y and dot brick on those fence columns between the fencing to kind of make it cohesive with the rest of the development. We left the stone signs the same in this iteration because the stone that's used in the signs is going to be the same stone that's used in the architecture. And all of the buildings that'll be located along Ann Arbor Road will carry that same stone. So the sign will sort of tie into the buildings, and then the fence columns will sort of continue the Ann Arbor corridor look as you kind of drive, drive past. Now, the smaller monument sign, if you will, it is a wall, is set back off of Ann Arbor Road that's sort of placed in the median, which is sort of the entrance way to Plymouth Walk. And then sort of that column-type sign is just some identifying signage to the turn-in to the actual Toll piece, which has like a lantern light on it. It's sort of just like a entryway signage, letting people know that that's the Toll side of, of the development. And we agree with your planning staff. If it is shown in the clear visit, vision triangle that's in your ordinance, we'll relocate that sign so that it's not within that, not within that clear vision zone, certainly. I have some pictures of actual Toll Brothers stone signage this evening. If you'd like to see those, one of them is new, one of them is old, so that you can kind of see how the look has lasted through time, if that's something the planning commission would entertain.
Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea. I have a quick question. You said the lantern fixture that's on there, does that match the lighting fixtures that'll be on the outside of those homes?
I'm sorry, I've.
That, you said that there was a lan, you know, it's a lantern fixture, the light fixture on that sign?
Yes.
Will that match the lighting fixture that, that would appear on the homes?
It'll be in the same style. It'll certainly be in the same style. I believe our community planning folks would best speak to that. But I think a lot of the, the homes that'll be built, townhomes in that area, will have sort of that same, sort of matching that linear elongated lantern that will be on the, on that sign and lit in the evening. So the, the first slide is just an overall picture of, or the plan that was included in your packet. Slide. This was the original submittal that I talked about, where the columns for the fencing use the same stone material that kind of matches sort of the architecture. And the next slide kind of just shows you that the units that'll be along invisible Ann Arbor Road will have sort of stone of the building architecture. So that's where the stone comes from. So the top side on the, the sign on the top, Woodlands at Gettys, is in Washington County. And that sign is about twenty years old now and uses the same. Pretty representative of the one that you see in your packet as far as. This one at the bottom is a Reserve at West Bloomfield, which is a work community for Toll. And it kind of, again, is sort of the stone that we'll be using to. These stone signs, the reason for this slide was just to demonstrate that these stones signs last, they're timely. They, they hold their value very well and they're safely, and even after years of, you know, as trends change over time, they still kind of keep up. Planning commission is amenable, we'd like to align and then use the Y and dot brick for the columns and the fencing, so.
So I have a question for the planner. So it is not in compliance with the ARC district. I mean, do we have the ability to just throw that piece away and allow this sign? I mean, is that within our purview?
Because it's a planned unit development, the, and what I would say is the, not only is it a planned unit development, the ARC district has a couple of, and the PUD standards and the ARC district standards, I believe as well, mention that it may be necessary to modify the standards if a PUD was used in the district or a resid, a more residential development. So I think that it would be appropriate. The, the planning commission has the right to modify the standards, and it might, and it would make sense in this circumstance because of the residential nature, which isn't necessarily common along that corridor. It kind of provides a transition with the Y and dot brick, but a different style of signage. I also will say that, looking at an actual photo of the brick, it looks a lot more muted and warm colored. I was concerned about the gray being a very cool harsh contrast to the Y and dot, but it doesn't look like that in these photos.
What are the thoughts from the commission?
So the brick matches the building materials, correct?
But the stone that'll be in the monument sign will carry into the same architectural bands of stone that'll be used in. Seems reasonable.
I don't have anything, I need objections to it. I think it looks. In light?
I wonder, could we go back to the page that shows the first two signs? Yeah. It's hard to explain. Maybe, Bob, go back to that second page. Maybe that'd be easier to see there. Okay. It's hard to see, but along the bottom of that Plymouth Walk sign, there's actually a, a concrete ledge and then an area below that. And it, it struck me, if we, yeah, that area there, if we kept that in the ARC brick, that would, along with the pillars, which will be brick, which aren't shown here, they'll be brick, that lower part along the bottom would give us one more element of continuity, while still allowing Toll Brothers to use the upper area, which, having seen it, I think there's a compelling reason to do that as well. It might give us a little bit more continuity with the ARC, so I'd like to suggest that as a possibility. As regards this Monument B, so if you go back to the first page, I would have hoped that we would have used the brick on the pillars by Monument C, again, again with that brick along the base of the big sign. But I could be talked out of that if we would do the brick along the base of the sign on Ann Arbor Road. So that would be my suggestion as a possibility.
I, I have a question, but could you come here for a minute? Because the pictures are a little hard to see. And I, I just want to show some, and I have a question. So, so this, these are the pictures you showed us, this panel here. So is this that sign that I just showed you?
This will be the sign that would be along Ann Arbor Road.
Okay, that's what I thought.
That's right there at the hard corner.
Okay.
And this is the commercial development.
Okay.
This is that landscape island. That's the entrance to the main drag, if you will, for the Palmeroy and the Toll site. This sign would be in that island.
Oh, in that area.
And then, as you go into the Toll Brothers site, there's the third sign, which is that post sign with the lantern that adjusts as Toll Brothers.
So I'm still a little confused. So what, where is the sign that's out on Ann Arbor Road? Which design is, it's this one?
That's the one.
Okay, so, so to build on, on Tim Boyd's comment, so, so you have this, this decorative fencing, if you want to call it that. And then, so the pillar here will be the Y and dot brick.
Yes, sir.
So couldn't this just be Y and dot brick? Is that, that, was that your point?
Exactly, yeah, just the bottom portion.
Yeah, I, I don't think we would be, I think if that's a consideration of the planning commission, to twelve or eighteen inches of brick as a base, then I think we could accommodate that, certainly.
Well, it ties in, it, it leads you in from the decorative fencing, I'll call it, for lack of a better term, into the actual sign. Okay. So are, and you have, have you been involved at all with discussions about the historical marker?
I have not.
I didn't think so.
That would, Laura, give me an update on that. It would, it would be in a completely different, it would, this, this review wouldn't pertain to that, but it would be up to the Historic District Commission. They would review the sign.
Well, where would the sign be located?
I, you know, and I, I think it would be located probably near the clubhouse for the, for the development.
What's historical? Well, that's the thing, Bob, that I, I have to raise this up with the district. Because originally, when we talked about this, if you recall, the townhouses were supposed to look like this farmhouse look. Do you remember that?
Bigly.
Yeah. So that, that there would, the marker would talk about the farms that were there. But, you know, the township just dedicated the other marker on the west side that does the same thing. So I have that same question, what is historical about it? I mean, there was some, I did a little bit of research a year or so ago. Yeah, I mean, that's, it's interesting, but it's not, it doesn't grab you.
Right.
You know? So I want to have a discussion with the Historical Commission about, okay, if we move ahead with this marker, what's it marking?
Gee, we had a metal plant there that was.
Or the, or the elk.
It was the site of the Great Picknick of eighteen sixty-four.
So we have to.
The sign and any other signs would be under separate cover.
So I think, I, I don't want us to lose sight of that or the ability to have that. But on the other hand, I just don't want to have something just to have something. I mean, it's got to have some significant reason why it's there. So I'm just pointing that out to you, so when you meet with your team, you can say that, I'll bring it up at the Historical Commission meeting, which meets next month. And we'll see where we go with it.
On another subject, your analysis says that the sign areas for Monument A and Monument B are just fractionally too large. Can we accept them as proposed, is that?
We can accept them as proposed. I, I, we, I was, that was part of my recommendation, was to have the admin review committee deal with those, but if you would, we can, we can also, we can approve them as, is, I, I think it's just, you know.
The difference for those of you that want to look is point two-five square foot oversight on Monument A and point four-one square foot oversight on Monument B. So you're literally, literally talking like that, so it's, it's nothing. I'd hate to see them have to redesign the signs just for that, it's all about.
Could go to the committee. Well, don't they have to go to the committee probably anyway for the location of the third sign?
What would be, is that what should happen?
I think that's what they're recommending.
Well, yeah, it might be a little bit difficult because it's, I'm not sure if that, but it, I, it would probably just be moving it within that area. I, I, I just, I worry if it ends up having to be in a farther away. So the, so the admin review committee can consider that, can make that.
Monument C?
Yes.
Okay. So it is going to the admin.
It will be going to the review committee anyway for Monument C.
But if it's that small of a difference for A and B, I think it's fine. Especially in a sign that large.
Are you going to have plantings on the, on the sign that's on Ann Arbor Road?
Yes.
Are you going to have plantings in front of that sign?
Yeah, I believe there's a separate landscape plan, or there, some of the landscaping may even be specked out in this community sign plan, but there will be plantings, most certainly along our signs.
And are you having, is this going to be lit?
I, it's, I would believe that it's going to be lit.
So they're like, spotlights, uplighting?
From the ground up, just on the, probably the, the wall facing the sign in the evening.
Is that true also for the interior sign? I'll call it the interior sign?
I believe so.
This would have been specked out on the site plan.
Right.
If any of it would, likely it's, I, I think that, I took a cursory look and they do appear to match the landscaping, like, it's not one-to-one with the exact landscaping plan for the renderings, but it, it looks similar. And anything that they were to change, if they were to add a light that wasn't in the site plan, we would.
I just want to be sure. And then also because of that, the Y and dot brick, well, probably you will never see it because the shrubberies will hide it. But I don't know what they're planning. I mean, we don't have the, yeah, in the winter, I don't know, I don't have landscape plans, so I'm sure it's. Okay. Any other questions or concerns?
I, I, when, once we get done with this, I'd like to ask adjacent some other questions about the status of the development right now, but not specific to this.
Okay. So are we ready for a motion on the signs? Who wants to do that?
Go ahead.
With respect to the Ann Arbor corridor sign review number one for the Plymouth Walk development, propose that we approve Monument A and Monument B size as proposed, that Monument C be relocated per the decision of the Administrative Review Committee, and that for Monument A, the lower bottom of the sign be revised to Y and dot brick. That's the area from the ground up to the first limestone cap.
Is there support?
Support.
Move by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve application twenty-five. 2536, subject to conditions, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Just a moment. So Commissioner Boyd, you have?
Yes. Jason, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last name?
Mike Langley.
Okay.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I, I don't know if this follows within your purview, but I'm going to ask anyway in the hopes that if it, if it doesn't, that you can communicate it to your organization. About three or four meetings ago, I asked the township if they would contact the developer and see if we could do some type of intervention regarding the trees around the site. There was quite a discussion over a number of planning commission meetings about trying to retain as many of the original trees as we could. And now that the work has been done, if you drive through the development, you can see some of those trees are struggling. And so I had asked that the township contact the developer and see if we could have Davie Tree or some other company come in and do some remedial action, maybe some deep root feedings. And now that we've had this drought for the last three weeks, the trees are really going to be struggling. So it would really be helpful for Toll Brothers to live up to the original agreement that we had, if we could get some type of remedial action in there right away, quick, to address those trees and try to save them because they're struggling right now.
I'll bring that to Scott Hanson, who's my boss and the director of land development, as soon as I get in touch with him in the morning.
Good. And if he needs to reach me to discuss it further, you can reach me through the planning commi-, or to the township. The other thing I wanted to suggest, right now, if you guys go up to Firwood Road, that's the road that goes along the northern edge of the development, the gravel road, they have graded in the berm along, on the south side of Firwood Road, but it's full of weeds and it looks horrible. So I guess my request would be, given that that's on the, the pomeroy development side, it's not clear to me if that's going to be developed concurrently with the Toll Brothers side, but it would really be helpful if we could go ahead and do the landscaping on that berm on the south side of Firwood Drive at the same time as the other landscaping on the south side of the development is done, because those folks up there are really suffering right now with the way that looks. So that is also a request I'd like to, not just from one commissioner, it doesn't, you know, it's not the planning commission asking, it's just one person.
Those comments are awful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Okay, we have the monthly planning report. Are there any questions, comments, concerns?
I have a, I have a question on the prior, the big B. I'm sorry I didn't catch this sooner. Is that okay? So when I'm looking at the approved plan, the proposed plan requested difference, if it was approved 10 trees, proposed as seven, they listed 30% difference, that's wrong, or, sorry, they listed 70% difference, that's wrong. It's a 30% difference, unless I'm not really understanding it correctly.
I think the 70% was all of the different landscaping elements combined, isn't it?
The 71% reduction is a, a reduction in total plantings, not planting area or one type, it's, it's all plantings.
Because 119 down to 85 is not 71%. So I, I don't know, I don't really understand the, it's, either it's a math error or they used the wrong term. It's part of the email.
Oh, in the email is what you're saying. Yeah, I, I'm not, I.
Mike who's steady or whatever.
Yeah, the calculations in the, my review are based off of my review of the actual plans. I didn't take the calculations from that email that you saw. I think that was just a conversational email back and forth. So the numbers in my actual report in my review are from the plans directly themselves, but I do think there was an error in that email chain conversation.
Okay. I think what would be helpful is that if you go to the original landscape plan and then indicate which plantings would be eliminated or proposed to be eliminated, and in that way we'll have a, we know what, which ones are, which are critical, some are just nice to have.
And I can provide that to the admin review committee because I did actually do that. Unfortunately, we weren't provided with a full clean landscaping, new landscaping plan, and the quantities on the new proposed plan weren't even listed, so we had to go through counting them individually. But I do have that list that I made myself that I can include, you know, for that conversation so you can see the actual differences comparatively between the two plans.
So this grassy area, you know, that you had indicated, that sort of, you know, separates the lanes?
Mm-hmm.
So would that be irrigated?
It was proposed, so the landscape plan and the original site plan did, it had, you know, obviously the plant species lists and the, the renderings, but it had a lot of other notes in that, in those notes, it did say that there was going to be irrigated. This new proposed plan, it's not a full landscaping plan, so it didn't include those notes that are typically included. I would assume that it was going to be irrigated. The original one said it was going to be. So that, that was my assumption.
Yeah, I, my concern would be, will that even survive, especially in the winter? It's very narrow and they're probably better off putting day lilies or something in that's pretty hardy, but we can talk about that at the, at the meeting, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring that, that up because it, it doesn't make sense to me and, and because everyone's focused on the 71%, so that's important to get that percent right. That's all.
It's important and also know what is being eliminated.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Or replaced, you know, if they, if they said they're adding, I don't know, some expensive plant and they're putting in something cheap, then.
That's 30 something. Right. And that was my point about the cost. It's like you can get day lilies at Lowe's for 20 bucks. I mean, if that's considered part of a plan, then fine, then replace some, you know, some $100 plant with a $20 plant.
Well, and there's different grades.
Yeah, yeah.
You can buy, you can buy a two-foot plant or you can buy a four-foot plant.
Yeah, yeah.
It's going to cost different.
Yep.
And they had done that. That was the, the species, so there was the reduction in species as well as some were changed entirely to more common, I think, maybe less expensive.
Yeah, yeah.
Plant species.
And if they did that, but then there were more, like, larger number of planted species or something in between.
For the size.
They did both. They reduced both things, not, you know, and.
Okay.
But we can have a more comprehensive list for the admin review committee.
So questions or concerns on the, on the monthly report or, or we'll tie it in with Commissioner comments and comments in general?
Do we have any dates for the master plan workshops?
We're going to send out a list of some proposed dates. We, there were some conflicts with the election schedule, but we're going to send out a, probably in the next week.
Okay.
List of dates.
Just one other comment here. You all will remember we reviewed the Mano tailoring plan a few months ago. Obviously, the building looks great from the outside, but you need to go look inside. It's really a spectacular job they did, so.
Yeah, I did, I did go to the ribbon cutting.
Oh, did you go?
Earlier this week, yeah. It's very nice inside, nice, you know, I don't know, it looks like marble, some kind of nice floor finishings and he's got about 90% of it finished inside as far as bringing in merchandising and that kind of thing. Pick a very ordinary sort of mid 50s building and really jazzed it up.
Good. It's great.
The whole section of Ann Arbor Road is really, you know, improving, it's really.
Any other comments?
We, we have a planning commission on the ninth.
Well, I think the only, do we have a meeting on the ninth? I mean, is that firm, that's a, a study session?
No, that's a regular meeting because of the election.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was, it's a different date than normal.
Are there applications for that meeting?
There are.
We're definitely having a meeting.
Yes.
On October 9th?
Mm-hmm.
I don't, yes, we are definitely having a meeting on October 9th. I, I, I wasn't sure off the top of my head what the applications we have on the table are, but there will be, there are applications.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a support?
Support.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Dorsevitz and who is the second, and Commissioner Lattawick to adjourn the meeting at 8:20. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Please adjourn.